Everybody. Thank you, if everyone can mute. Good evening, this is the September 27, 2001, meeting of the Fairfield Representative Town Meeting. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Hi. Before I call the roll, I did Representative Vergara get on?
Yes, she's muted. Jill, I can't, we can't hear you, but I see that you're speaking.
I was looking for Representative Vergara to introduce the new members from District Seven and Four. Or I can go to Representative Iacono to introduce the new members in.
I think.
District One. I'm happy to introduce Ken Astarita from District One. He replaces Kimberly Grant, who resigned.
District Ten.
So hello, welcome. Jill, do you, are you able to talk now, or? I don't think we can hear you. So I guess I'll introduce on Jill's behalf, we have a new member in District Seven, John Kuhn, and a new member in District Four, Elizabeth Zesima. So welcome to all three of you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll call roll.
Thanks, Ann, yes, please.
Ed Bateson?
Here.
Veronica Monahan? She's on the line, she's having a hard time.
She's on the wrong line.
Okay, thanks.
Can I just interrupt for one second? If someone knows the regular dial-in line and has my cellphone, can you text it to me? Thank you.
Amy O'Shea?
Here.
Amy Roggero?
Here.
Phil Gerber?
Here.
I saw. Karen McCormick?
Here.
Cindy Perham? Jeff Steele?
Here.
Alex Darrell?
Here.
Matt Jacobs?
Here.
Scott Nickel?
Here.
Sharon Pistilli?
Here.
Laura Carson?
Here.
Alice Kelly?
Here.
Marcy Spoliar?
Here.
Liz Zesima?
Here.
Will Diaz?
Here.
Josh Garskoff?
Here.
Joe Seibert?
Here.
Jay Walk? I saw Jay. I know you're here. Matt Ambrose? Hannah Gale?
Here.
Lisa Havy?
Here.
Tamisha Powell Dunmore?
Here.
John Kuhn?
Don't fail us now, John.
He's here, I don't know.
Okay.
Is he not working?
Now we hear you.
Is that you?
Mark McDermott?
Here. Fire.
Mark McDermott here?
Here.
Yes, he said here. Yep.
Karen Wachman?
Here.
Hank Perrin? Pam Iacono?
Here, here, here.
Christine Messina? Peter Tomlin?
Here.
Drew Giorgiattis?
Here, here.
Rick Rower?
Here.
Chrissy Kelly?
Here.
Bill Perigini?
Good to see you, Bill.
Good evening, and I'm here, I couldn't hear you, I think you muted it, but I'm here.
Elizabeth Altabelli?
Here, present.
Ken Astarita?
Here.
Peter Bridgen?
Here.
Frank Paty?
Here.
We have a form.
Thank you.
Ann, this is Cindy Perrin, I'm a little late.
Can you hear me now, Karen? I'm really sorry.
Yes, I can hear you, yes.
Okay, finally, I'm so sorry, thank you.
Okay.
And you have me, Cindy Perrin?
Ann, do you have Cindy? Yeah, okay, yeah, we do have you, Cindy, thanks. Okay, let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The First Select Woman is in our meeting tonight, so I just wanted to have another moment of silence, thinking about her family, since she lost her mother. So let's give that a thought. Thank you. Let's go to the first item, which is to consider and act upon the minutes of the regular monthly meeting held on July 26, 2021. Can I have a motion to approve? Representative Zesima, seconded by Representative McDermott. Are there any comments on the minutes? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Anyone opposed? Any abstentions?
Aye.
What's that?
Did my voice go through? Yeah.
Yes, yeah, I just wasn't sure who it was. It was just Representative Kuhn and Liz.
And me, I was not at the meeting.
Who's that?
Liz Zesima.
Oh, Liz, yes.
She's not a member of the body.
Right, okay. Thank you. Let's move on to the next item, item three, to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by Town Planning and Zoning Commission. Resolved that the town of Fairfield abandoned the remaining portion of the town-owned paper street known as Cherry Street, which intersects with Kings Highway, as shown on the attached map, reserving, however, an easement for a sewer, the location and dimensions of which shall be as determined by the town engineer, which easement shall be recorded on land records of the town of Fairfield. Can I have a motion to pass this resolution first? Representative McDermott, seconded by Representative Roggero, thank you. Any discussion, Representative Vergara?
Thank you, Jill Vergara for District Seven, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So this is language that was drafted by the town attorney, and I do have a red line, if that would help to say where this new language would be inserted, but I'll read it to you all right now. It will say, "Resolved that the town of Fairfield discontinue the remaining portion of the public right-of-way, known as Cherry Street, which intersects with Kings Highway, as shown on the attached map, reserving a 20-foot easement for a storm sewer, upon which no structures shall be built. The location and dimensions of said easement shall be as determined by the town engineering manager, and recorded on the town of Fairfield land records."
Is there a second of Representative Vergara's motion to amend? Representative Zesima? Any discussion? Jill, just to confirm, that was vetted by Mr. Baldwin, right, by the town attorney?
Yes, it was, and we had spoken about this at committee, and Mr. Johnston seemed amenable to the language then, and it just, I think will put people's minds at ease, that no structures can be built on the easement, and that the 20-foot sewer easement will be maintained.
Thank you. And any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of this motion to amend, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you, so now we'll go to the main motion, which is now the amended motion. Are there any other comments or questions? Representative Gerber?
Yeah, is Attorney Baldwin on today?
I'm not sure.
Yes, First Select Woman.
This is Attorney Baldwin, I'm on.
Oh, hi, Attorney Baldwin, Bill Gerber, District Two. I'd sent you an email through the moderator, asking for a commitment to create, or at least to, for you to work with the First Select Woman, to create a comprehensive inventory of paper streets, and also town-owned irregular lots. And I outlined, you know, the rationale for that, that currently these things pop up from time to time. The, it, the process, it doesn't happen often, but when it does, you know, sometimes they're a little bit contentious, and the process, you know, if the neighbors and prospective buyers, prospective sellers, you know, knew that these existed and where they are, that at least we could say, you know, we have some transparency around this, that everyone knows what they're getting into when they buy a property in the neighborhood, or across the street, or next door. I didn't hear back from you, I don't know if you saw the request, but I was hoping that you'd be committed to doing that.
Yes, Representative Gerber, I did see your request, and I did not, quite frankly, think that it was germane to this. It wasn't specific to this item, which is on the agenda. I don't think that your request is, is, fits with what's before the RTM now, so I have put it on my long list of things to do, and I will get back to you. If that's okay with you, I'm sorry, I didn't respond to you instantaneously. I will say that with regard to the paper streets, that is nearly an impossible job to do, because these are things which have existed prior to even our zoning regulations, and you would literally, as I understand it, have to go through each and every old map in town to find out where they exist. So that's nearly impossible. In terms of the property owners adjacent to these so-called paper streets, that's usually something which is learned in the process of buying a piece of property in town, and based on a title search, which is, I'm sure you all know, is traditionally done in the due diligence aspect of purchasing property. And in terms of the odd lots that are owned by the town, I think that's an excellent idea. I have on my list of things to do several people from the public who own property adjacent to such lots, a couple of them in town, and I think it's a very good idea to put such a list together, and furthermore, to come up with a kind of a comprehensive plan, as you suggested, along the lines in how to determine the fair market value of such properties. So that's an excellent suggestion, and one which we intend to pursue, but just not at the present time, certainly I didn't have time to do it before this meeting.
Oh, no, I was just really looking for a commitment, or at least a response, as to whether or not that was something that you would be willing to do. Regarding the paper streets, I think what worries me a little bit is that substantial value can accrue to the people that benefit from these abandonments, and, you know, it's a little unclear, but there, I think there have been times when the abandonments create, you know, strain on town, you know, infrastructure, like, you know, a major condo complex could end up, you know, benefiting from something like this, that would create maybe some strain on the sewer system, some, you know, flood, you know, issues. And so the idea that these can happen without maybe some consideration. Now, I know you said, you know, we can't get, you know, necessarily direct consideration, but whether there should be some methodology for the town getting compensated for the potential strain on town infrastructure. So that was my reason for bringing it up tonight, but thank you for your response. I think it would be worth doing, if possible, if you say it's not possible, then can't do it.
Representative Gale?
Thank you. So I did understand from Mr. Baldwin's email that, you know, that there was not a possibility of any town, any remuneration from this, but given that there is already an easement, which is, you know, for what is under the ground, is there a possibility of keeping some public access, just in walking space between those buildings, down to the fence line there, and the possibility of some sort of small green space, or something like that? Just something for the public betterment, the public good? You know, nowadays, obviously, there's a lot of need for walking space, and there's very little in that area, and that section, which we all drive down all the time, as it leads the way to Whole Foods, as well as, you know, the things along Commerce there, it's just so unattractive, and if you live in the area and have to walk there, it's just, there's just nothing to walk to. So I, that's just, I think I sent you an email, but I actually don't remember if you emailed me back, sorry.
So Attorney Baldwin, again, so the question is, could you have a public walkway there, and I guess retain the paper street that is there, is that the suggestion?
Well, you know, there's an easement anyway, you know, and so I'm just wondering if on top of that easement, in very crowded urban areas, which that part of town is now, and is becoming increasingly so, there's been a movement to parklets, which are just little teeny-tiny oasises of green, and, you know, just a little place where you have some sort of a place to walk to. And is there a way to do that on top of that easement, is my question?
In this particular situation, I think the answer is, is no. In other situations, I think that might be feasible, but that's something that's considered by the Plan and Zoning Commission, very much so, when they are presented with situations like this. But this is not a situation which presents itself to that possibility.
Thank you very much, I just, you know, I thought it was worth a shot, thanks.
You're welcome.
This is Bill Hurley from Engineering. I just want to add, though, that for Cherry Street, the back half was already abandoned or discontinued, and so in this case, it really, it really wasn't worth pursuing, you know, that kind of pedestrian easement, because it didn't really take you anywhere. But Hannah, just to let you know, the larger right-of-ways and some other factors, I know in engineering, we do discuss with Town Planning and zoning, and conservation as well, any benefits, because some of these rights of way are exactly what you said, parklets, or little open, mini, little open spaces. And so we only go through a couple where we would discontinue them, really if there was no environmental zoning, or, you know, engineering, or whatever department benefits, so. But that is a good question, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Representative Vergara?
Thank you. I wanted to jump back to the issue that Representative Gerber raised, when he referenced the email he sent about process. And I understand that the town attorney, Town Attorney Baldwin, said that it's not feasible to put together a list of paper streets, but I think that Representative Gerber just also raised the idea of needing to have a set process for these sorts of land transfers, whether it's an abandonment, or an odd-sized lot that we're going to transfer over and to one of our residents. And I think it's a really good idea to have a set process, because I think it would eliminate, it would be more efficient that way. I don't think that we'd have as many questions come up, at this level, at least, if we knew that it goes through a certain process of just notifying all abutting neighbors, ensuring that all benefiting parties are current in their taxes, and I think it might be helpful to get the Open Space Commission to also, or the Land Acquisition Commission, to review, to review these sorts of transactions. But, so I just wanted to make a note that I think it would be helpful to have a set process.
If I may, this is Attorney Baldwin, again. I think that the town code has an entire section dedicated to the disposition of town property, and it actually covers the topic of open space, and the Land Acquisition Commission, and also paper streets. And I think that everything that we need is contained in there, and that includes the oversight of the RTM, which asks these very good questions, and looks at all angles, even those that are not always anticipated by something like the town code that created these sections on dealing with the acquisition or disposal of real property by the town. So I think that this, you are very much a part of this process, and so these questions are very good. I'm not sure if we need to go much further in formalizing things, although I do appreciate Representative Gerber's suggestion of having something which is more standardized when it comes to the disposition of the odd lots for town. I think that's a very good idea. But again, that's all subject to discussion, and looking into it further, and coming up with a program for something like that, but it's a very good idea.
Yeah, I feel badly for Mr. Johnston, that it's taken him this long, he engaged an attorney, it cost him money, and I think the process really could have been streamlined for him, especially if, for me, as a representative of that area, to have known that the neighborhood was aware of the situation. Once I was able to contact people there, and know they were supportive, it was definitely pushed me into being supportive of this, and the other issues of being up to date with taxes, and I think it's just great, it would be maybe important to look into revising those procedures, if they're already in our code, because it doesn't seem like they're sufficient.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions? Okay, so let's go to the vote. If you can unmute. All in favor, please say aye, of this is of the amended, the resolution as amended. Please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you, that passes unanimously. The next item, to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution. Oh, you're welcome, Mr. Johnston. The following resolution, as recommended by the Board of Finance, resolved to achieve the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA's, purposes with respect to the Institute of Museum and Library Services Grants to states. Funds be and hereby are expended in the amount of $22,834 to purchase several items and services that respond to the pandemic, including mobile shelving units for space flexibility, outdoor solar powering stations, powerage stations, nano-septic self-cleaning items for facility touchpoints, and a Wi-Fi counting system. 100% of said purchase to be funded by an ARPA grant to Connecticut Public Libraries, as administered by the State of Connecticut. And further resolved that First Select Woman Brenda L. Kupchak is authorized to make, execute, and approve, on behalf of the town of Fairfield, any and all contracts or amendments thereof to secure said grants. May I have a motion to approve? Representative Iacono, second, please? Anybody? Representative Zesima, thank you. Is there any discussion on this item? I guess not, so we will go on to the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Oh. Any abstentions? Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Representative Gerber, I didn't see your question until we were voting.
No, 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 I'm sorry, no, it was, it was something from earlier, that I pressed the button by accident.
Oh, okay, good, okay. Can I, I would like to, again, scramble the agenda, if I can, to let the vote on the harbor happen first, since the ARPA discussion could be long. Could I, could someone move to scramble the?
I'd like to move to take the items out of order.
Thank you, and Representative Roggero, looks like you're seconding? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you, so we'll move to the last item, which is item six.
Adam Moderator, Representative Iacono, can I move to read the waving? Read, wave the reading.
Wave the, yes, thank you, I would love if you would do that, okay.
Wave the reading, no.
Wave the reading. Okay, I want to highlight for people that there was, oh, no, sorry, that's not it. I wanted to ask Mr. Herschler and Ms. Taylor if we could just go through the amendments that you're requesting on top of these amendments, to make sure that we have it right. So first, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve this resolution. Representative Niffle? Who's that? Who said, "I'll do it," Darrell, okay, seconded by Darrell, thanks.
District Seven, three.
Okay, thanks, Alex. So I just want to make sure that we have the right amendments that you asked for. And so if I could just go through that. In item C, let's see. So this is 2412C. I believe we should say "any natural person," and cross out "association, corporation, or group," is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes, okay. And then later in that same paragraph, it says "any person submitting a mooring waiting list application," should that be "natural person"?
That's correct.
Okay. And then in, under D, the next paragraph should be E, right?
To get to your version of this, yes, the D is correct. The paragraph beginning with the words "in allocating mooring locations", that is in the current town code, paragraph E, echo. And the one currently marked in the agenda as E, in the town code currently, is labeled F. And we recommend not changing the current town designations for these paragraphs.
Okay, that's a good idea. Okay, and then in the second sentence of that E, it says "any interested person", again, that should be "natural person," right? And we delete "association, corporation, or group"?
That's correct.
I don't know if you have that in front of you.
Just recommend, there's another in B, in the first line, there's another person that should be "natural person", E?
In D?
D, bravo. It shall be a violation for any natural person.
Oh, yes, thank you, okay.
And then, and there we're striking "association, corporation, or group".
Right, okay. Okay, thank you. So can I have a motion to amend this proposed ordinance, as we just went through, Representative Giorgiattis, seconded by Representative Carson? Is there any discussion about this, these changes? Okay, so let's vote on just this motion to make these additional changes. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you, so now we have on the table the original motion as amended, just now. Is there any discussion on this? Any questions, or? Representative Giorgiattis?
I just want to thank the Commission for all of the hard work. This is so intensive, and so detailed, and there needs... and so detailed, and there needs to be so much historic knowledge. So I just want to thank the Commission for all the hard work they've done.
That's a great point. Thank you. Any, anyone else? Okay, so let's go to the vote on the, on the entire motion, on the entire resolution. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Jack and Kim.
Thank you so much, and thank you for scrambling the agenda so that we could appear, get this done now. We really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
You're welcome. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
So now we'll go back to the item five, the ARPA motion to hear, consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Finance. And before, A, I would welcome anyone's motion to waive the reading, but I also want to make sure everyone's looking at the version that was posted and sent out last week after the Board of Finance voted. So we'll go through that to make sure you're looking at the right figures.
Madam Moderator, I make a motion to waive the reading.
Thank you, Representative Garskoff.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of that? Thank you.
Aye.
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 Thanks. So I just want to make sure that the version that we're voting on and that you're looking at has a total of $24,790,000 that we're allocating. So this was what was sent out last week after the Board of Finance voted. Can I have a motion to approve this item? Representative Garskoff, seconded by Representative Wolk. And the first select woman has asked if she can speak with us first. Brenda, are you there?
That's Karen. Can you hear me okay?
Brenda, we're, yes, I can. We're so sorry about, about your mom.
Thank you very much. I appreciate, I appreciate that very much. It's a tough loss, for sure.
Yeah, I bet.
So I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity just to have a few minutes, a couple of minutes to just talk about, you know, the journey we've been on since we received this funding. And I do appreciate the majority of our members of the RTM and Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance attending the workshop that I held back in July with all the department heads and relevant stakeholders on the projects that we put together. I just want to remind the body that, you know, we did spend, my administration spent a considerable amount of time over a time period of many months reviewing all the waterfall projects, looking at the federal guidelines to try to fit up and work in a way that would give some benefit to a large percentage of our community in many different ways. And so it did take a considerable amount of time. And I, as I said during the July workshop, you know, when we presented all these different items, that I welcomed the feedback of our elected officials and the public and that I, that I expected, you know, people to give that feedback. And if people had projects that they wanted included that they felt were not, to come, come to me with those. And then also to suggest items that should be removed to add them in. So I do appreciate the feedback we got back from the public. We did get, I did get a tremendous amount of really good feedback. And I appreciate some of the feedback we, I received from some of the RTM members in the Beach District regarding flooding and adding some flooding funding. And Flood and Erosion Board bringing forth the studies that they had recommended. And so that was very good feedback, and we were able to include a study that I believe, after reviewing all of the studies, that that study was the one that would have the greatest impact across the board in that area and would be a potentially one that could actually be funded down the road. I know that some of the studies that were presented by the Flood and Erosion Control could potentially have a very high price tag, but that's not to say that we couldn't bring that forward through the Board of Selectmen and the town bodies at a future date to discuss it, because obviously flooding is becoming a bigger issue, not just in the Beach area, but obviously the Rooster River area and other areas of our town. So I wanted to just thank, again, the elected officials who did provide feedback as I had asked and constructive and all. I really do appreciate all the questions that we received. And I hope members felt, felt that the answers that we provided were helpful. We tried to respond as quickly as possible with as much detail as possible to elected officials that did have questions. And so I'm going to open it up. I just wanted to have that opportunity to share that with the body. And I'm hoping that we'll be able to move forward with a lot of these, with these projects, because obviously I think it's a real benefit to our community. And thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you, Madam First Select Woman. So we'll move to a discussion. Representative Giorgiades?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Drew Giorgiades, District Nine. I'd like to make a motion to reduce the ARPA funding by $450,000 for the performance stage and public restrooms of the Fairfield Museum.
Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, seconded by Representative Perigini. Would you like to discuss this briefly, Representative Giorgiades?
I'm sure. I have lived in the Beach area for 30 years. I have received a lot of emails from my constituents who are neighbors of the museum. I myself am a neighbor of the museum. Everyone in this district is concerned about the floodplain. This project would be in the floodplain. And most of the concern is that in District Nine, we already are really good citizens of Fairfield. We, we have dump traffic, we have beach traffic, we have university traffic, we have traffic at Jennings through carnivals and events that run down there. And we're really happy to be a big part of the community in that way. But an outdoor theater that would add to noise, light, traffic, the general consensus from my constituents and myself, as having lived here 30 years, is that the neighbors don't support it. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, Madam Moderator, this is Bill Perigini of District Nine.
Okay.
Yeah, I would like to echo the sentiments of Representative Giorgiades. I love the Fairfield Museum and History Center. I participate in many of the events that occur year round. And I know many of the residents in that area do as well. I think relative to this plan, there was really no plan from my perspective. I think the ask was for funds in advance of a detailed plan. And as Representative Giorgiades expressed, there are lots of neighbors that have been adversely impacted by some peripheral events, and they are very much opposed to anything that would amplify sound. There are a number of events being held at the Burr Homestead that just became, I've just became aware of. But even relative to the theatrical staging and lights and restrooms, I think the concern is that the neighborhood organizations like the old Post Road Association, as well as the Sunny Home Residents Association, NOR, the Immediate Neighbors, had the opportunity to be contacted or review anything proposed relative to these, this theatrical staging and restrooms. I think there could be alternate solutions implemented. And for that reason, I share the sentiments of Representative Giorgiades in opposing the releasing of funds for this, this project.
Thank you. Representative Gale?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Hannah Gale, District Six. I just really feel that this is a rare opportunity to accomplish some very necessary bathroom building at that location. I've been to events at the museum, and so many people's children play in the adjacent field, and everyone is using these porta-potties, and they're very unpleasant. And it just doesn't seem like that situation is going to change. There are just going to be these jazz concerts, these outdoor events at the museum. And, and this need for a bathroom is just there. And if we don't use this opportunity, then, you know, we're going to look to having to pay it, you know, in the long run anyway. So, and I also just want to say that I did communicate with Michael Jellie about this through emails. And, you know, I just have no reason to doubt that he wouldn't hold, you know, the, just the respect for the, you know, the, this, the place and, and the historic significance of it of the highest value, because that's what he does. And anything that he would build there, I really feel like we, of all people, we could trust him to make it appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comments, Representative Vergara? And then Representative Zesima?
Thank you. Jill Vergara for District Seven. I agree that this is an interesting opportunity. It's forward-thinking, but I just don't, and it's a, it's a really good idea, and I think ultimately I would be supportive of it. But it's, it's in the inception phases. It's, it's not even, it's an idea. It hasn't even been planned out. There's no design features. The community hasn't been able to have input. If we use this ARPA funding to do this, then it completely removes the community from the process. And I think that the procedure and process is so important for neighborhoods to be able to voice their, their concerns about it with, with traffic or congestion or garbage. It's an essential component of all building projects. And so by using ARPA funding to do this, it's effectively erasing their ability and, and to have their voices in this process. I don't think that they should have to rely on any one person's promise to include them. The procedures and processes do that for them. Our normal procedures and processes for funding, normal building projects would necessarily require their voices to be heard. So I just really don't like the idea of, I'm very much into and supportive of protecting minority voices. And they were clearly a minority voice on this. And it's, it's a sensitive issue, and I think that they need to be heard and that the process is very important for community input. And I just don't like that that didn't happen. It's not ready to be funded yet.
Thank you. Representative Zesima?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Liz Zesima, District Four. I want to echo Representative Perigini and Giorgiades' comments, and those are the reasons that I could not support this, in addition to not being shovel-ready or anything even close to that. And finally, and maybe for a broader discussion, I don't see or know where we have for this, for the ARPA funding as a whole, contingency. And I think we need to create something like that. We've just had the biggest tax increase in 10 years. I do not want to ask taxpayers to pay for the overrun of these projects. And I do support them. And I'm grateful for, you know, our president and our, our state delegation, our national delegation who made this happen. But I want to be very careful about what we do in terms of good fiscal preparation for using these funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Okay. So we'll move to the vote.
Sorry, I do have more.
Oh, sure. Oh, Hannah, okay. Representative Gale?
Sorry, I just wanted to read this from an email that Michael Jellie sent me. And he says in this email, "If this funding is approved, the museum is committed to hosting meetings with our neighbors to make sure whatever is done is appropriate. We will not push, push forward a plan that people oppose. We ask that you give the Fairfield Museum the chance to work with the, with the community on this and to allocate these funds." Anyway, just wanted you to know that's what I said.
Thanks. Okay, any other comments or? Okay, so we'll move to the vote on this motion. Oh, let's see. I don't know, we might need a roll call vote on this. Representative Pistilli has just raised that. Let's first do a voice vote and see. Actually, Anne, I think we should do a roll call vote, if you would.
Of course.
Thank you.
Edward Bateson?
Yes.
Veronica Monahan?
Yes.
Amy O'Shea?
No.
Amy Ruggero?
Yes.
Bill Gerber?
Yes.
Karen McCormick?
No.
Cynthia Purim?
Yes.
Jeff Steele?
No.
Alex Darrell?
No.
Matt Jacobs? Representative Jacobs?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Matt Nicol? Yes.
Okay. Yes, we did, we did.
Yes.
Sharon Pistilli?
No.
Laura Person?
Yes.
Alice Kelly?
Alice?
Yes.
Mercy Spohyer?
Yes.
Liz Zesima?
Yes.
Will Diaz?
Yes, yes.
Josh Garskoff? Representative Garskoff?
Excuse me, Anne, it might be prudent to clarify what we're voting for. We're, so this is to vote relative to the motion made to cut the funds.
That's right. Cut the funds for the theater, for the museum, yes.
So, yes, affirmative would be to cut the funds. I just want to be clear that everyone understands that.
Yeah, actually, Representative Pistilli just said she, she wants to change her vote. I think that there was some confusion, so thank you, Bill.
Got it. Representative Garskoff?
We want to take.
All right.
Aye.
Represent, oh.
I'm sorry, I'm still waiting for Josh Garskoff.
Aye.
Thank you. Joe Seibert?
Yes.
Jay Walk?
Yes.
Matt Ambrose?
Yes.
Hannah Gale?
No.
Lisa Havy?
Yeah.
Tamisha Powell Dunmore?
No.
John Kuhn?
Yes.
Mark McDermott?
Yes.
Jill Vergara? Karen Whackerman?
Yes.
Hank Ferentz? Representative Ferentz?
You're muted, Hank. Ferentz is yes.
Thank you. Pam Iacano?
No.
Christine Messina?
No.
Peter Tallman?
No.
Drew Giorgiades?
Yes.
Rick Rower?
No.
Chrissy Kelly?
Yes.
Bill Perigini?
Yes.
Elizabeth Altabelli?
Yes.
Kenneth Astarita?
Yes.
Peter Britton?
No.
Frank Pateeth?
No.
Here, the motion passes. Um, now we'll go back to the, the main motion of approving the rest of the spending. Um, is there any more discussion? Uh, Representative Carson?
Madam Moderator, Laura Carson, District Four. I just have two questions before we go forward. I'm absolutely in support of these funds, these projects. And I know it's been a lot of work to do this and I'm very appreciative. But I just have two concerns. One is if, um, logistically, if the projects are, um, held up because we do have a lot of supply chain issues and they're projecting that it may go through at least for another year. And plus the competition to get contractors to work, which are, to work these projects and looking at meeting with other towns. What if these projects cannot be done in time? What happens? Does anyone know the answer to that? What are the consequences? My other concern is, um, if the project-driven projects go over and we have to increase the amount for certain projects and we move down the list and we get towards other projects and we run out of money, what happens to those projects? Are we bound, uh, because we voted to have these projects? Where do we make up the difference? And I'm just wondering if you can get, anyone can clarify for me. Thank you very much.
Those might be questions for Mr. Baldwin.
Uh, Madam Moderator?
Yes.
I'll answer those questions.
Great. Thank you.
So, um, Representative, yes, you know, these are estimates. While they're very good, uh, supply chain issues, and it, it is something I've spoken about over the last couple of months, wanting to get this, um, done as quickly as possible so that we could start putting our shovels in the ground. So for example, if some of the projects, uh, were having difficulty getting them done, we would have to go back to, um, through the bodies to ask for additional funding. But in the case, for example, uh, you just removed $400,000 from, um, from the list, that would sit in the ARPA, uh, count and could potentially be utilized uh, to, uh, meet the need if a project goes over. But again, some of these projects could actually be under. Um, they are estimates, good estimates, but they are estimates. And I know that the other towns are dealing with very similar sort of situations. Uh, they are putting their projects forward and doing the best they can to move them forward. But again, we would come through the bodies if we needed additional funding for any of the projects.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Representative Gerber?
Yeah, I, I, um, we can bring up anything at this time, right? I'd like to just talk about paving for a few minutes. Is that all right?
Sure.
Okay. Um, so I want to reiterate a comment I made last time. I'm, I'm a little, um, confused about the 3 million in paving. And I just, um, want to talk about it for a couple, couple minutes. Um, three years ago, under the budget of the former First Selectman, I think the budget for paving was $2 million. And the Board of Finance, um, cut it by 500,000. And Tom Flynn, who's the Chairman of the Board of Finance at the time, did a, a very detailed presentation on pa, historic paving, uh, how much was put in the budget, how much was actually delivered, you know, the access over a period of time, et cetera. And so the, what I took away from that presentation was that the Board of Finance's view at the time at least was that 1.5 million was sort of a run rate. But then the, the following year, um, I think due to COVID, we put a million into, uh, the First Selectwoman Cupchik put a million into the budget and another million into, um, a bond. But it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know if Jared's on, but correct me if I'm wrong, that that million was never spent, uh, for the, the bonding was never done. So there was a million, I guess, that was spent on paving that first year for, for Selectwoman Cupchik's budget. Then the following year, um, we were asked to sort of re-up the approval of another, that million dollar, um, bond. And a million went into the budget. And then we sort of re-upped the authorization to do another million of bonding. But it's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that that million dollars has never been bonded so that we're facing two years in a row where it's about a million dollars. And so my understanding from, I think, the last conversation with First Selectwoman Cupchik was that this 3 million, um, is not meant to replace a run rate. We've had a lot of trouble over the years, sort of, you know, it used to be in bonding. We, it was really, the Board of Finance was really against bonding, paving, sort of got it into the budget. We're trying to sort of formalize like an annual run rate in the budget. And, um, it's my understanding that First Selectwoman Cupchik, that you're willing to, you know, you're committing that we're going to have a run rate in the budget, in the operating budget. And I would assume, uh, and you can confirm this, please, like, I mean, 1.5 million sounds like the, the number. It, it, and i- is that sort of the number you would expect to have annually in the operating budget? And if so, add another million per year from ARPA, you're talking about 2.5 million a year. It doesn't seem logical that we're actually going to get anywhere near that. So I'm just wondering if really in, in, in actuality, that's just going to end up being more contingency, which is maybe okay. Um, but just if you could clarify and sort of tell us what your, your commitment is to, towards the annual operating budget and whether 1.5 million, which has been sort of described as the, as what it should be, that or more, I guess. And, and if that's the case, how you plan, or do you actually plan on spending 2.5 million a year over the next three years?
So, um, Representative, I'm, I'm a little confused, um, about what your question actually is. Um, I'll try to answer it the way I think I understand it. Um, I mean, as, as this body knows, there was a lot of, um, let's just say, impropriety surrounding, um, things that were happening here, uh, especially regarding paving for a number of years. And when I took over, there was the DPW audit that had been, um, put into place right prior to my election. And that, that audit uncovered a whole host of issues uh, that were happening, um, in our town government. And most notably, there was, um, some very, um, unusual activity regarding paving and the former superintendent who was ultimately arrested. So what our new DPW director had suggested, and you guys voted for last, uh, budget, was this comprehensive consulting, uh, analysis of the 270 miles of our roads, which will be, uh, delivered to all of us um, in the month of Oc, October, excuse me. And that will allow us to be able to really look without, you know, sort of the politics involved, which has happened in the past and some of the impropriety, but an actual analysis of every single road in our town and what, what needs to be done to it. And I think that's going to be a valuable document for all of us to see, especially with the capital planning workshop that will be, uh, commencing in, in October. So what the plan was when we put the list together was our knowledge that we were behind in paving in our town. And this was meant to do some catch-up work for our community. So it's, it's 2.5 million in paving and it's $500,000 for sidewalks. So, um, I know this is asked several times, quite a few times actually, um, in various meetings. Would this mean I wasn't going to put money in the operating budget for paving? And that answer was, of course not. It, this is makeup. This is to do some catch-up work. I spoke to the Board of Finance, actually even before we got ARPA money, and about doing, oh, the chairman actually, about adding paving to our capital plan because we, we are very behind in our paving. And I think one of the most, um, basic things you do for a, for a community is provide such, such a basic service as paved roads. Um, roads that are good to drive on, that don't have potholes. And sidewalks that our residents can use and, and utilize in a way that's safe. So, um, no, this is not to supplant the operating cost. This is for makeup. And I, I don't know exactly what that analysis, uh, is going to look like when it comes in on October, but I have a sneaking suspicion that it's going to tell us that we need to do a lot of makeup paving. And so listen, um, I, I will take a look at that document. I will attend, obviously, the capital workshop. And then when I'm building my operating budget, I will take it into account. But again, you know, and I do have a bit of a different philosophy on bonding paving. I do believe we should do some of that because when you put paving in an operating budget, obviously you're taxing the residents, um, quite a bit. So I think these are discussions we can have. But I think we need to look at this during the capital workshop about after we see this analysis of how, exactly where we are in our 270 miles of road. And I, I hope that answered your question, but I wasn't 100% sure, um, exactly what you were asking.
So, so you are answering my question, but I, I just want to, you know, and you probably know this. Uh, I'm a little skeptical only, only because, uh, first of all, there, I, I understand there are a lot of improprieties, uh, um, going on at DPW. But, um, as far as I know, I, I, I don't know of paving improprieties. In fact, you know, for many years, up until a couple of years ago, you know, our, you know, both sides of the aisle, Republicans, Democrats, you know, were extremely, you know, publicly complimentary about the paving in this town. In fact, you know, our, our paving sort of won some national aw, awards. And so, you know, I think it probably deteriorated in the last couple of years. But, um, my, my question is really about the ability to deliver, um, more than a million and a half a year of paving. And because we've had these conversations many times, under the last administration as well, we've got to catch up, we got cut, we got to catch up, we got to catch up. They never ca, are able to catch up. And I believe there are reasons for that. Manpower reasons, um, you know, weather re, whatever the reasons are, there are reasons. And so my real question here is, um, because I don't really, you know, buy that we were always, you know, the most horrible, most uns, uh, that, unless we're all Trumps and all, on all the boards in, in town. I think there was a time when our paving actually functioned. And I think the analysis that Tom Flynn did, uh, as Chairman of the Board of Fin, Finance was at a time and included times when there were, we, we, I believe, you know, had a, had a pretty decent paving operation and were just unable to deliver that much paving. So my, my real point is, I don't think, based on history and about what, what, you know, Tom Flynn presented, that we're going to be able to deliver, you know, not only, you know, 1.5 million, which should be the run rate, but another million on top of that, so 2.5 million per year. And so what I'm suspecting is that this is, a lot of this is going to end up in contingency. But I just wondered your commitment that you're going to have that 1.5 million in the operating budget or a combination of the operating budget. You can propose, you know, uh, bonding, I guess. But, you know, this, uh, which is something we've been trying to get away from for, for, for a long time. But, you know, my concern is that we're going to end up, if that 3 million is used for, you know, what would normally be operating budget, we're going to create cliffs going forward. I don't think that's what anyone wants. So I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that we get back to some sort of normalcy in, in the budget, in the paving budget.
So, thank you, Representative. Um, you know, number one, I don't think the town ever, ever did this, this analysis of our roads by an outside, um, group. I think it's always been an internal thing. So, and, and listen, I was on the RTM in 99. I, I know there was some politics involved in paving, like, you know, certain people's roads got paved kind of thing. We're actually going to get an actual blueprint from an outside group that does this for other towns. And we're all going to see it, all of us. And then we're going to make a determination, um, and I hope we'll bring it up during the capital prog, uh, planning workshop, to have a discussion based on what that analysis says about what our plan is going to be moving forward for our paving needs. And I cannot commit to you, this is not going to create a cliff, number one. This is for catch-up. This isn't a, this is aside from the operator. It's nothing to do with the operating budget. This is 2.5 million dollars to go toward paving, period. How I build the operating budget based on all the needs of the town at the time as I'm building it, obviously I will include paving I did for the last two budgets that I created. I don't know what level of pa, paving I'll be able to include based on what I'm doing as I'm building this budget and seeing what our needs are. All of them. I don't know what the Board of Ed's going to come in with, uh, for their budget. You know, obviously that's going to go into my budget. And so there's a lot of different things. I don't know what contracts are going to be settled with the HR department and what those are going to look like. So there's a lot of moving pieces. I don't know what equipment or s, different needs that are going to happen. And it takes literally months of repeated, uh, meetings in this conference room with department heads going through reams and reams of information. So, but just to be really, really clear, this is not to take paving out of the operating budget. This is to do catch-up work. And again, I think when we bring this analysis forward for the, at the capital planning workshop, we're all going to have an opportunity to really see where we are and then make decisions. If, if the Board of Finance agrees, that we might need to bond some to do some catch-up so we're not taxing our residents, uh, overtaxing our residents because we have put so much paving in the operating budget. But again, that's a decision for all of us to make together, uh, during the capital planning.
Yep, yep. Thank, thank you for that. And, and so what I'm taking away from that is that you've had 2 million planned paving in each of the last two years. The year before we had 1.5. So the, the annual excluding this 3 million should be somewhere between 1.5 and 2 million. This is going to be on top of that. And to the extent they, they can get it done, that would be, that would be awesome. If, if they can put in sidewalks where there were no sidewalks or repair sidewalks, that, that would be awesome. And, and so, uh, if it doesn't get done, we're not losing the money. So that, that's what I'm taking away from this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Representative Spohyer?
I, Representative Spohyer, District Four. Um, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the electric car fleet and some of my concerns regarding that. Um, first of all, I want to say that I definitely support, um, transitioning all of our town fleet to electric cars. I think it's a really, um, beneficial to our environment and will be a great cause. Um, I'm a little concerned about the amount of cars that we are planning on doing in such a short time. Uh, right now there is a car shortage. The supply of cars compared to the demand, really hard to get cars. So I'm not sure that we can actually acquire 15 to 18 cars in this time period. Um, it worries me. Also, the cost of cars is, is really high at this point, at an all-time high. Um, that makes me nervous. I, I wonder if we weeded a little bit, if, if they would go down or if we didn't purchase as many directly at first, at the start of this program. Um, I'm also concerned that if we buy all of the cars at one time, they're all gonna, their life expectancy is going to end at the same time. So 10 or 11 years from now, are we going to be dealing with having to replace these cars, um, of our town fleet all at once? So, um, what I'd like to see, and I don't know if this is possible, but I would like to see if the administration is upfront dividing these cars up for the year. So I, I don't know if your intention was to go out and purchase, you know, 15 to 18 cars at one time, um, at the start of this plan or if you were to phase it in throughout the four years that we had to spend some money. I just think that that would be beneficial, um, for us as a town so that the, we're not, you know, introducing 18 cars to our fleet all at once and so that they all go. And I also want to know, is, is this something we're looking at including in our yearly, um, budget? Because right now we get these, my understanding is we get these. Because right now, we get these, my understanding is, we get these cars from the, um, the police, they're, they're hand-me-downs, and I don't see these cars anywhere in our budget now. And we have 22 cars that are in very poor condition, we're replacing only 15 right now, um, in this four-year time period. Are we going to be adding, you know, much like we do with DPW vehicles, senior center vehicles, stuff like that, are we going to be adding this into our budget where we add a couple cars a year so that we're not in this situation 11 years from now?
And if, so, just to, uh, reiterate, um, some of the parameters of the fund, the funds have to be obligated by 2024, which means we have to be committed. So, say, for example, we could put an order in, but maybe we won't get it yet, and that all the funds have to be spent by 2026, by the end of 2026. So, I appreciate your feedback, we'll obviously take that into consideration about how and how many we purchase in, in those time periods, um, based on the federal guidelines and our ability to get the cars. The plan is to get 15 cars. We currently have 30 in this town fleet, there is a large number of town cars throughout our town departments, but the, the immediate ones, and I spoke about this at length at the Board of Finance meeting, there's about 30, and they're Crown Victorians, uh, they have not been passed down from the police since the police were using Crown Victorians, which I don't even remember how long ago that was. Um, they are not in good shape, and as I shared with the Board of Finance, we're only asking for 15 out of the immediate 30 that we're utilizing. Those 15 are used by employees, um, in our town government that utilize them every day. So, our building department, the building inspectors, our zoning inspectors, our health department, and engineering. These are people who are out every single day inspecting and, and, and visiting job sites a lot. And as we all know, our building department is a, um, a money-making department for our town, and obviously, it's very, um, crucial to our, uh, to our growth in our community as far as economic development, and also, uh, the ability for, um, renovations to happen and additions and things like that for people in our community and all the tradesmen that earn their livings, uh, doing those things. So, those were just, the idea was to do the 15, and then do an analysis, um, of the remaining 15 to kind of get a sense about where we, where we should go, you know, maybe we need a few more electric cars, we're not really sure, we're going to be doing that analysis, but those 15 are for the people who utilize them every single day. And I do believe, um, that this is a message we want to send to our community, that we care about the environment, and we're actually putting our money where our mouth is, that we are utilizing energy-efficient, green vehicles for our day-to-day operations of our town employees. And when those electric cars roll up on job sites or at residents' homes who are having inspections done, that they see that town seal on an electric car, and our, our people are coming out of those cars. So, I think that's really important, and it's, it's just, those, those Crown Victorians are, are just awful, gas-guzzling, bad for the environment, and quite frankly, I think they're unsafe. So, I, I thought this was just a really great thing, um, for our community, for us to utilize with the ARPA funding.
Um, I, just to comment, I don't, I don't disagree that it's not a good use of the funding, I, I'm just concerned, because we have 22 cars that you were saying that are in poor condition and are unsafe, so if we're only replacing the 15, um, are, are you saying that we really don't need the 22 cars? Because I looked at the breakdown, and they were divided out by departments, um, so I'm not sure, like, how you're going to go about distributing these, will there be more shared or more pooled cars, um, so that they can utilize them more evenly, you know?
I'm not, well, I'm not sure which document you're looking at. So, we have 30 cars that are utilized, 30 cars here, 15 are utilized every single day very regularly. The other 15, some of them are used sometimes, some of them are just out there when they're broken down and in the shop, and people jump in that one because that one's not working, uh, needs to have some repair to it. So, um, I don't know what you're looking at with the 22, but, um, we're looking at replacing the 15 for the, the people who use the cars every single day. And then it's a very, um, it's not exact, I mean, they don't use them quite as often, but we're still working on that analysis.
Okay, because I'm, I'm actually looking at the, um, the document that was, uh, just what's in reply to some of my questions, it actually was provided to the Board of Finance, and it listed all 29 cars in the fleet and the conditions that they are in, and it was, it looked like that they're designated to departments, so, for example, building, as you said, is very important, um, it has six cars, they're all in poor condition. Um, so, so it looks like they're, they're designated, so I'm just wondering, you know, do you get down to the bottom of sewer, and, um, you know, are they not going to have a, are they going to still be driving a poor car around, and what, what are we going to do to address that? And, I'm thinking that, you know, are we going to be adding this into our, our yearly budget? Because I, I think it's something that we don't want to end up in the same situation 10 years from now with, um, all cars, or majority of our cars.
No, and obviously, they have been driving in these cars for a very long time, and, you know, this is the first time, I think, anyone's ever discussed them or their condition. So, I'm, I'm glad that we're going to at least have 15 new electric cars, and we're going to make that determination. My administration will be reviewing the usage of the remaining 15 cars.
Um, Representative Pistilli?
Uh, thanks, Madam Moderator, Sharon Pistilli, District Three. Um, so I wanted to follow on to Representative Spohier's comments regarding the electric vehicles. Um, you know, first of all, thanks to President Biden and the federal, the, our federal congressional delegation for getting us this funding. And, um, in the documentation, there was mention of, um, also a couple of SUVs that would have to be hybrids, and the Sustainability Task Force has said that they're in favor of an all-electric fleet as opposed to, um, adding any hybrids at all to the fleet, because that, um, that technology is, you know, kind of going towards obsolescence. So, I wanted to make a suggestion for the SUVs. Um, the Ford F-150 is coming out with a Lightning, um, in 2022. So, I think if, if we can keep the fleet all-electric, that it would be, you know, it is better for the environment, and that's something to check into, and it's, you know, what our Sustainability Task Force recommends. So, I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Representative Georgiades?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Drew Georgiades, uh, District Nine. Um, I would also add, um, to the sustainability comment regarding the electric vehicles, I know we approve every year, uh, we pre-buy, um, gasoline and diesel, I'm sure the majority goes to our diesel, uh, trucks and whatnot that's used by DPW, but I'm sure there's some budget savings there, um, with the electric cars. Um, my comment, I'd like to say that the ARPA funding, for me, this $25 million grant, um, from the federal government, which of course is funded by all of the taxpayers nationwide, um, is a fantastic gift to our town. Um, my personal preference would be to use it on one-time items, uh, things that are expensive and hard to plan for, um, with the municipality like our own. I would love to see more air conditioning put in the schools, because currently, all of our facilities will not be air-conditioned till 2033. Um, and since Sandy Hook, and since we've had to close the windows, close the doors, lock up our schools, um, there are a lot of students and schools and teachers, um, in some very hot schools. Or one-time items, like unpredictable things, like the Rooster River, um, like flood mitigation in District Nine. So, um, that said, um, brings me back to the paving, uh, because we have, year to year, always discussed paving, always discussed funding paving, whether we bond it or we fund it, um, I do know, I want to just make a comment for the public, that, um, having worked on the, um, committee, uh, with Public Works, that the asphalt, I appreciate, um, the First Selectwoman's, um, desire to catch up, um, but we, there are a lot of things we need to catch up around town, and asphalt, I know from my experience there, the asphalt, um, facilities closed down in November, they don't close back up till March, so there's a small window, you know, less than a 12-month window, maybe a six-month or a seven-month window, we can actually do paving. So, I would hope that, um, any money put in that direction is, can actually be utilized in the timeframe that one can do paving. So, thank you for your time, um, I look forward to having this money benefit our town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Zesima?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Liz Zesima, District Four. Um, I have a comment, I'd like to revisit paving, and I think First Selectwoman Kupchik may have answered a question I had, that was the breakdown between paving and sidewalks in that $3 million item, and I think it's two and a half million for paving and half a million for sidewalks, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Um, I was surprised to see it, actually, in here, you know, I haven't been on this body in four years, or the Board of Finance for two, and as other people have said, there's always been a back and forth about cutting, which I've, I was opposed to at the time. In 2019, some monies, I believe, went into contingency, which I know has grown exponentially, so I don't know that we would, had, had considered, um, I'm just coming back, uh, using any contingency funds for paving. But in general, and I didn't know that we had fallen behind, but in general, I, um, have a problem with bonding, that's asking the taxpayers to pay cost plus X. I think for our taxes, infrastructure is one of the very basic things that we should expect in, in the normal operating budget. Um, it's also business-friendly, um, and I agree with Representative Gruber's comments, and would add, in terms of a, of a cliff, you know, we can all see the cost of oil has gone up, and none of us have a crystal ball, but in structuring this budget going forward, um, and committing to, you know, sound fiscal and operational management, I think we have to look at the, uh, potential for inflation in the materials as well. So, I do support it, but I, I support it in the spirit of, of we shouldn't be bonding, uh, something like paving. So, thank you for your, your time putting this together, and, um, I yield.
Are there any other comments? Representative Vergara?
Thank you, Jill Vergara for District Seven. Um, I think it's great that we did an audit of our roads and that we approved that in our budget this past year, and we're anticipating the results of that audit, um, very soon, I think you said in October. I just am, I don't understand why we are making this allocation for a certain amount of money to be spent on paving before getting the results of that audit, which is impending, and we're soon to receive those results. Is, should we maybe be deferring this decision so it can align with that audit?
Um, actually, Representative, uh, Mr. Marsilio, while he hasn't been here for a very long time, is very hands-on, and he's been touching base with those consultants, and, um, they are, uh, giving some, you know, initial feedback that our roads are not in great shape. So, I am, I'm quite certain that 3 million isn't go, or 2.5, excuse me, isn't going to, um, even come close to what we're going to need to do.
Okay, it just seems like a shame to have a, an audit that we paid for that could really help to set this in motion, a plan in motion, and have real values assigned to certain and specific roads or, or sidewalks, rather than just doing it blindly right now.
Well, I don't think it's blindly, Representative, because the 2.5 million will go toward what's listed out in this, in this report, and then hopefully, during our capital plan, we can have a broader discussion about how we want to move forward. So, for example, I'm, I'm probably, I would, I would bet, you know, tomorrow's lunch, for example, that 2.5 million is going to be a very small amount of what the needs are going to be outlined in this report. I mean, we all live in town, um, and we've got some, we've, we, we've got some issues that we need to care for. So, to me, 2.5 million, based on, um, my discussions with our DPW director and his initial discussions with the consultant, is really just a small percentage, and it will not go to waste, I can assure you of that.
Okay, thank you. I mean, for full transparency, I was one of those representatives who wrote to you, and, um, I did have an issue with paving for a while. I didn't like the idea of it, it is something, it's an essential government function, I thought that it should be contained in a budget, um, I really believe in having, um, approaching things with budgetary discipline, and I thought that enabling a bailout like this wasn't a great idea. But I was persuaded by knocking doors and talking to people, and roads is one of the most important things to them, and they see the roads are falling apart, there are problems with them, and I do understand the importance of allocating these funds to fix that problem right now. But I, I really hope that we can depend on, um, budgeting going forward in the operating budget in an appropriate way, so that in the future, we, we don't ha, ever have to come in with any kind of bailout like this.
Well, again, I think it's an interesting conversation, right, for us to all be having. I know that, um, there's a large majority of towns, well-run towns, fiscally responsible towns, that bond paving. Um, so, that is a discussion I know that has gone back and forth over a number of years, before I was in this position, and I was in the State House and really wasn't, um, you know, involved in, in your town discussions, um, going back and forth about bonding versus operating costs. And, so, I don't know, I think it's a discussion for all of us to be having, um, you know, at the capital workshop and as we move forward as a community. I think it's a discussion to have, uh, based on what this report says. And like you said, Representative, you know, um, you know, you knocked on some doors and you heard about paving, you know, this office is like knocking on 100 doors every day. I, I think I have a pretty good pulse on, on what our community cares about, and they do care about this. Um, so, you know, but, but listen, I think it's a good discussion for us all to have, to figure out how we want to move forward, you know, based on what that report says. If, if it says, my goodness, you've got, you know, all this to do, I, I don't know if any of us would be jumping to put 10 or 12 million dollars in our operating budget for pet, for paving, so, I don't know. I think it's a, it's something we should all talk about in the coming months.
Well, I appreciate this conversation with you right now, I appreciate the conversation I, we all had with you in July, and, um, I do think that I owe you deference in these decisions, these are policy decisions, and you are the executive, and, um, the, the whole Board of Selectmen are the executives, so I, I feel like all of them could have made some more policy, um, suggestions, and I, I've been trying, as an RTM representative, to do my due diligence, try to review these projects in a way that I normally would have just for, for cost, and, um, whether or not, um, cert, we have enough information to actually be allocating this funding. And, um, I, I really do appreciate all the information that your department heads have given us, and, um, even, I, I don't completely agree with some of these allocations, but that is your call. And so, ultimately, I, um, even though I, I would have wanted a little bit more educational spending for some of our, for the HVAC in schools, or, um, even some risk mitigation with, with flooding, and I consider, I consider HVAC for schools, the risk mitigation too for mold. Um, but it, I, I do, I, I think this is a good list, the, um, all of the flood projects are great and very necessary, uh, and I would, I would, I'm, I'm going to ultimately support- and very necessary, uh, and I would, I would, I'm, I'm going to ultimately support this, and I would ask that you prioritize, um, those projects involving flood mitigation, especially the Rooster River, um, the wave and erosion study, and the, the downtown resiliency projects. I'm hopeful that your office will push those to the front, because I think that they, they, we really need to ensure that they get done properly.
Now, thank you, Representative, and, and, you know, I think, as you know, um, the, the, uh, the needs of, uh, air, air conditioning in our schools is pretty big. Um, the school administration is just starting to do their analysis, um, and, and they're looking at somewhere of close to $100 million, um, of air conditioning needs. And so, when I was putting together the list, um, you know, I talked to the superintendent, and I, you know, I said to him, I, I looked at the Capitol water call, and you don't really have any school air conditioning, um, the waterfall in the next, like, 10 years. So, is this a priority, or is it not a priority? And, because I would have thought that they would have made that really a big priority, but it wasn't, um, you know, like, within the range. So, they said they had to really do a lot of analysis, uh, and again, they said they're, I mean, they're looking at like $100 million, um, to make sure all of our schools are air-conditioned in all the areas. So, that's when I asked, you know, what school do you think we could finish and just get air-conditioned and give some parity? And our two middle schools, uh, are air-conditioned, and Fairfield Woods is not completely. So, you know, I, I asked him if a million would be good, and I would be happy to go before the town bodies for the remaining amount, and I asked if they could chip in a little. Um, they're, I guess, willing to chip in 100,000, uh, toward the, the project. Uh, I would have hoped it would have been a little more, but, um, the, the, the needs are great there, and that's, it, it's got quite a big price tag.
Yeah, I think that the Fairfield Woods Middle School is a good example, because I was happy that it was on the list, but I know that the project is actually much higher, it's not, it's much more than $1 million. I heard, I think that the estimate is at least $4 million, so, um, I would have liked to have seen the full project covered in ARPA. But again, this is your call, these are your priorities, and, um, I do appreciate the work you've put into this, and again, and I thought that, um, the responsiveness of your department heads was great, and I really appreciate it.
Now, thank you, Representative, and just to be clear, they didn't have this project actually on any list. It wasn't until I reached out to them and told them I wanted to give them some money for air conditioning. And so, they kind of worked really hard to scramble to put together something, and the 100,000 was to give us an estimate. And now it's actually, we're kind of getting some rough costs back from the district, we're looking at 7, 8 million, really, for that project.
Okay, um, we're gonna, Representative, Representative Garskoff?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Josh Garskoff, District Five. Um, I, um, on the Rooster River topic, um, is, um, is Bill Hurley on the line? I had a question last time, and he wasn't, and nobody else seemed to have an answer, so I'm hoping maybe I can get an answer out of him.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Josh, um, I had asked, you know, if there was any questions, anybody wanted a department head on, and I know you and I interacted back and forth with, um, with Bill Hurley.
He, he is on, he actually is on, Brenda, I see, yeah.
Oh, that's awesome. Okay, great.
Yeah.
There's our guy, Bill, he's dedicated.
Yeah, hello, yeah, this is Bill, uh, do you have a question, Josh?
Thanks, Bill. Um, so, I think I saw somewhere, uh, in a later version of the ARPA write-up, and I could be wrong about this, it could have been in the original version, too, uh, I thought it said something about excavation or dredging, which I didn't recognize from the first version, and it could just be, I missed it. But I was curious, 'cause I don't, I don't, I didn't remember that from the presentation that I watched that you did some months back, years back, maybe. Um, so I was curious, Bill, is, is there a, a plan or a thought that maybe there would be some excavation and/or dredging as a part of this project, and, and where might that be, if you, if you have a sense of that?
Uh, yeah, no, this is mainly for the detention pond or detention areas, and I think there might be a small component of excavating, uh, you know, just, uh, scarifying the surface to create the, uh, the basin or the, the pond area. A lot of it will involve, uh, uh, berming up, uh, areas, or like mini dams holding back the, the water, uh, in, and I think we have, uh, three or four main locations, uh, and a couple of minor ones as well. And, um, that, that's what it's really for. If, if anyone's thinking of, uh, like dredging the Rooster River and all that, no, that, that would, uh, that would not, uh, be in, included, uh, in, in this, uh, original, you know, the estimate here.
Yeah, that, that's what I remember from the, from our, from the presentation and such, but, uh, okay, thank you very much, appreciate the, the answer.
Sure.
Representative Perugini?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Moderator, Bill Perugini, District Nine. Just a comment relative to the paving debate, certainly great points, just a, an example that brings it close to home. Um, I've got full faith in the First Selectwoman's plan and her administration, the expertise of Mr. Marsilio, and very impressed with this type, the scientific methodology that he's gonna use in the paving project. Uh, last Thursday at 11:00 AM, I was notified by a neighbor and constituent on Fairfield Beach Road that a divot, a potful on Fairfield Beach Road resulted in a cyclist falling to the pavement and injuring her upper extremity. Um, I brought that to the attention of Mr. Marsilio at 11:00 AM, and it was repaired by 1:00 PM, just a testament of the attentiveness of his department and, but certainly illustrating the need, um, for paving. And, you know, if, if one person is injured as a consequence of issues with our paving, it's far too many. So, again, just to, uh, just to reinforce the need for that project to be done, and my faith in Mr. Marsilio and DPW. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Representative Zesima?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Liz Zesima, District Four. Through you to Mr. Hurley. Um, Bill, I know that the flooding issue for many, especially in my area of town, is not entirely about the Rooster River. Um, it should be, I believe, related to storm drains. Um, for you and/or First Selectwoman Kupchak, um, what are we looking at in terms of remediation, which might be cleaning, it might be some other modification to storm drains in the flood-prone areas?
Hello, yeah, this is, uh, Bill Hurley, Engineering Manager. Uh, we are developing a list, uh, we actually have a list already of, uh, where there were some serious flood complaints from, uh, the, uh, hurricane remnants in, in Ja, uh, July, and again, the main rainstorm in September 1st, and we're compiling that list. Uh, we are scheduled to meet with the DPW and, uh, go over all the, um, the items on the list and the neighborhoods, uh, probably at the end of this week, or probably next week, I should say. Uh, and then from there, uh, we will tackle, um, certain areas that have what I'd call short-term or quick solutions, or relatively quick solutions, and others are gonna take a little bit more time. One of the things that is troubling some about any flooding is you have to make sure you don't make matters worse for people downstream. A lot of people think, well, I have a, you know, a 12-inch pipe, and why can't I make it, you know, 24, 36-inch? Well, that might solve that particular neighborhood's problem, but the neighborhood immediately downstream would get bombed out. So, it's kind of a delicate balance, and that's where, you know, whether we do detention areas, or whether we can do, uh, some storm, uh, system, uh, improvements, or, uh, in terms of maybe adding some basins, if it's a localized, uh, small area of, of flooding, or maybe we, we can increase a, a size of pipe if the, uh, downstream area can handle it, or maybe in a case, I'll just use a quick example of, a 12 goes into a 12, then goes into a 24, well, maybe we can do the, uh, 12 to an 18 to a 24, or, or something like that, and, um, and, and go through that process. Uh, we do have some, uh, money, uh, that we, um, have from the capital, uh, non-recurring, uh, that, uh, we are using, uh, to, uh, hire our, uh, contractors to clean out the pipe, and in some cases, uh, there might be other improvements, such as a video, you know, sending a video camera through, or replacing a, a broken, uh, section of pipe. Uh, there were a lot of, uh, drainage complaints, and, uh, we are, we are trying to tackle them as quick as we can.
Thank you, and I just want to also say thank you for, um, to all involved for the funding, not only for the, uh, Rooster River, I've been flooded out now twice in three years, um, but also for the intersection in Stratfield, that is a very dangerous intersection, and it also has inhibited foot traffic to our businesses, so I think it makes good commercial sense, as well as safety. So, thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome, thank you.
Representative Walk?
Thank you, uh, Madam Moderator. Um, this is a question through you to, um, my friend Bill Hurley. You there, Bill?
Okay.
Anyway, so, so my question.
Yeah, yeah, go, go ahead, Jay.
Okay, so, um, thanks for everything, Bill, um, you're doing a great job, um, and we're lucky to have you. Uh, my question is, um, when, when, when the town or the state right now has been, you know, doing, uh, uh, roadwork, paving, how long does it take after they rip the road, uh, or strip the road, um, down to the bare minimums? How long does it usually take for, for the town or the state to come back and, and pave?
Uh, usually, yeah.
My constituents have been coming up to me saying...
Jay, you're breaking up.
I'm sorry.
Um, Bill, maybe you can answer his question.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I, I think, uh, I understood his, his question. Um, yeah, typically, the state, um, they'll have a pre-construction meeting with the contractor, um, and they'll have two different, uh, they'll have one main contractor, but they'll be, the contractor will be, uh, subbed out for what they call milling, which is tearing up or, or grinding the, uh, road, and then the next, uh, like, a couple weeks later, they'll come and pave. Uh, whenever, though, there is weather problems, like a couple days of rain, that will push the schedule back, um, uh, because, uh, they line up, you know, their, their jobs, and so therefore, um, if we had two or three days of rain, even if it was like last week, and they were gonna pave this week, uh, that does affect the schedule. And so, uh, I can, if you're talking about, uh, Stratfield Road, uh, I can look into that further and find out if the, uh, schedule has been delayed by any, um, by any means, but usually it's within a, a two or maybe a three-week period.
Yeah.
Okay. Jay, can you, did you have anything further to say? I don't know if you can speak. I think we're set. Um, thank you, Bill. Um, Representative Diaz?
Okay, okay, thanks, Bill.
Oh.
You're welcome.
Jay, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to ask Bill down, so now that the state, the state's doing...
Jay, we can't really hear you, you, you're cutting out.
Yeah, I'm muted, how about now?
Oh, that's better.
Okay, so, Bill, they're doing, they're doing, uh, yeah, thank you. Um, they're doing Stratfield Road, as you know, right now, so that's a state project. Are they doing anything, um, uh, for curbing? Are they doing anything to alleviate, you know, the, the problem of flooding goes down Stratfield Road also? So, do you know if they, they're aware of this?
Point of order, Madam Moderator, is this related to anything related to the ARPA grants? If not, can we please move on?
Well, it is important to this, okay, well, I'll, I'll end it, but this is important to a lot of people on this end of the town, Representative Vaikono, all right? So, all right, thanks, Karen, we can, we can discuss this at another time.
Yeah, Jay, if you have any questions, you can always reach me, thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. Um, Representative Diaz?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Um, through you to, uh, Bill Hurley, this is Will Diaz, uh, District Five. Um, Bill, I, I, just a question about the flooding. Um, over here in, in, I'm around Melville, Nordstrom area, um, there's a bunch of woods behind the, um, which actually go right, right behind where the parking lot is, uh, across from the old Coles. Um, and there's trees down in that area, and that's, water comes through that area, and, and every single time, uh, it rains, a little bit of rain, we're getting, you know, we're getting more and more flooding, and most of the, the houses on my street, people lost cars, uh, their, um, their basements were, were flooded, mine was flooded. Um, but, uh, I, I, I'm wondering about, it, does this plan include, uh, anything around, um, cleaning up those areas as far as main, maintenance is concerned, uh, to, to redirect the water? Uh, because these, every time a tree falls into one of these little areas where the, where the water comes out, uh, it's just blocking everything up, and, and we're, we're, we're just getting killed over here. So, um, I, I, I know you mentioned that, uh, that there would be some discussion to, to, to deal with quicker issues, but, um, I, I, you know, I just, I was wondering if there was anything, uh, in, any discussion around that sort of stuff?
Uh, yeah, uh, we can check with our, uh, DPW, uh, and, uh, see if, uh, we can, uh, walk, or one of our engineers or surveyors, walk, uh, some of the tributaries in, in that area, if that's, uh, uh, something that's, um, needed. Now, some of the, the areas where the tree falls down in, in a river, uh, the town doesn't own, and, and, you know, there's, unfortunately, we might not have the legal right to, to go onto private property. But in, in your case there, uh, if you're referring to, uh, Tungus Hill Park, that is owned by the town, and, and we could take a look at that. That is also one of the areas that we were looking at, uh, and have a design, uh, that's probably around, um, 30 to 50% complete, uh, that the consultant is looking at, uh, Tungus Hill Park. So, um, uh, that is one of the detention areas that we were talking about regarding the, uh, Rooster River. And just to let everybody know, uh, with the Rooster River, we're hoping late October, or maybe early November, to kind of give everybody an update and, and kind of have like a public informational meeting, uh, where we can, um, maybe share some of the designs, or at least give people some updates, um, on, on the design.
Thanks so much, Bill, appreciate it.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you, Bill. Um, are there any other questions on the ARPA funding that we're about to vote on? Okay, seeing none, um, let's go to the vote. Um, so this is the, a vote on the ARPA funding with the amendment of, um, removing the Fairfield Museum, $450,000. Um, all in favor, um, you know, maybe we should do a roll call of this as well, and, if you would.
Of course.
Thank you. Make sure everybody's on the call.
Edward Bateson?
Yes.
Veronica Monahan?
Yes.
Amy O'Shea?
Yes.
Amy Ruggiero?
Yes.
Bill Gerber?
Yes.
Karen McCormick?
Yes.
Cynthia Purim?
Yes.
Jeff Steele?
Yes.
Alex Durrell?
Yes.
Matthew Jacobs?
Yes.
Scott Nickel?
Yes.
Representative Nickel?
Yes.
He said yes.
Sharon Pistilli?
Yes.
Laura Carson?
Yes.
Alice Kelly?
Yes.
Marcy Spoliar?
Yes.
Liz Zesima?
Yes.
Will Diaz?
Yes.
Josh Garskoff?
Yes.
Joe Seibert?
Yes.
Jay Walk?
Yes.
Matt Ambrose?
Yes.
Hannah Gale?
Yes.
Lisa Havy?
Yes.
Tamisha Powell Dunmore?
Yes.
John Keun?
Yes.
Mark McDermott?
Yes.
Joe Vergara?
Yes.
Karen Whackerman?
Yes.
Hank Ferentz?
Yes.
Yes, Anne.
He said yes.
Thank you, Hank. Pam Vaikono?
Yes.
Christine Messina?
Yes.
Peter Tallman?
Yes.
Drew Giorgiades?
Yes.
Rick Rower? Jay Walk?
Yes.
Matt Ambrose?
Yes.
Hannah Gale?
Yes.
Lisa Havy? Tamisha Powell Dunmore?
Yes.
John Keun?
Yes.
Mark McDermott?
Yes.
Jill Vergara?
Yes.
Karen Whackerman?
Yes.
Hank Ferentz?
Yes.
Yes, Ann.
He said yes.
Thank you, Hank. Pam Iacono?
Yes.
Christine Messina?
Yes.
Peter Tallman?
Yes.
Drew Giorgiades?
Yes.
Rick Grauer? Representative Grauer? Come back. Chrissy Kelly?
I think you're on mute.
Yes. Chrissy Kelly, yes.
I'm sorry, I was on mute, yes.
Thank you Rick and thank you Chrissy. Bill Perugini?
Yes.
Elizabeth Altabelli?
Yes.
Kenneth Astarita?
Yes.
Peter Britton?
Yes.
Frank Batiste?
Yes.
That's unanimous with 40 in favor.
Thank you. So the motion passes unanimously. Brenda, I want to echo something Representative Vergara said, which is to thank you and your staff for the hard work on this and for their responsiveness to everybody's questions. I know there were a lot. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. You know, we did put a lot of effort into it and we are very appreciative of this money and we wanted to do our best to make sure that, like I said in the past, that a wide majority of our community were given some level of benefit from this, from this fund. So, thank you.
Thanks. So now, can I have a motion to adjourn? Representative Pistilli, second by Representative Gale. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you all. Thanks. We'll see you in October.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks Karen.
Good night everyone.